Coming and welcome to the April 6 regular meeting of the Board of Multnomah County Commissioners. Today's meeting is a hybrid board meeting. Some presenters and guests will appear in person, and some will appear virtually. For those presenting virtually, please mute your mic when not speaking. When presenting, make sure to unmute your mic and turn on your camera. And for all presenters, please state your name for the record before speaking or responding to questions. May I have a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rosenbaum moves. Commissioner Myron seconds. Approval of the consent calendar.
Opportunity for public comment on non-agenda matters.
Consent calendar approval.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chair Vega Peterson?
Aye. The consent calendar is approved. Now, public comment.
Opportunity for public comment on non-agenda matters. Opportunity for public comment on non-agenda matters. This is a time for the Board to hear public testimony and offer board deliberation. When it is your turn to speak, I will call your name and unmute you or call you to the presenter's table. I'll set a timer for three minutes when you begin speaking and announce when your time is up, at which point, please wrap up your sentence. Madam Chair, we received, I think, 10 oral testimonies and one written testimony, which was shared with Board members and staff. I'll call people who are in person first. Injured and pissed off. Bruce Charles, Malicia Torres, and Charles Johnson.
My real name is Injured and Pissed Off, and yesterday I received meals from the Meals on Wheels people. And the man that was delivering the meals, he says, "Oh, I see that cart's gone from outside your door." I go, "Well, yeah, somebody stole it three weeks ago or so, four." And I said, "Well, you know, the city owns the property." And I didn't tell him. I talked to the police department about the videotapes that the building should have. Adrian Ledford, L-E-D-F-O-R-D, is the officer. And I went to the police station last week, and they said that he's on sick leave. Well, I wonder how he could... I don't blame a person for being sick or anything, but after seven dog attacks, and even some of them were on videos of my service animal and complaining to the Board here over the years, I'd even complained to the city on that side of the river at their board meetings. And they can get away with anything here in Portland. People are getting pissed off all the time about the shootings and things like that. Eleven thousand car thefts last year, that's like 900 a month in the city. Well, that cart's almost the size of a car. It's 66 inches by 36 inches by 24, 36 high and by 24 wide. And I don't think that the officer will ever review the tapes. I'm wondering how they were even able to get animal control to say that my dog had been attacked. Of course, I had to take him to the vet and pay bills, and he was limping at a month each time of the two dog attacks that he got severely injured. Had to take antibiotics and other things like that. And I just don't like that at all. Of course, I can understand your problems, like Jeff Coogan that was the Board. He was a drug addict, apparently, and that was after the last two dog attacks. And I got no "just ice." I may as well as went skating for justice. I pronounce it as "just ice" because that's the way it should be pronounced, like tomato or tomato or potato or pot, otto. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bruce Charles. I hope that, I'm sure Tasha has given you the latest installment of the, in the Well, I'm awake by Nigel Jackus about the library issues. This is called Books on Hold. He did another one that I presented the last time I spoke. The situation at the library is just, is chaotic. We have the $387 million bond that's passed in 2020. And what we're getting out of it is plans for nearly 50%, 49.7% fewer materials on the shelves. They haven't been able to secure an alternate space as they did in the '94 closure. It was a very good space. It was Trans Central, which was down there on Fifth Avenue. They have a $464,000 mobile library with all the bells and whistles, and it hasn't gone anywhere. It's not been rolled out. It was, it arrived last June, but it's, they discovered damage, and they haven't been able to get that together. And the most, the greatest concern for me is this reduction in materials and this utopian scheme to like, "We're all gonna..." You know, books are quaint, but you know, the pages get torn and, you know, let's just move on to apparently some of the way of accessing information. And I hope that we can just stop this scheme. One library veteran staffer who requested anonymity said the reduction in the collection is aimed, quote, "at reducing labor costs associated with the collection." Simply put, it's a lot cheaper to maintain comparatively empty shelves than the contrary, than otherwise. So you're, we're paying for shelves to be empty, fewer materials, almost 50%, 49.7%. And I just urge that we replace this library director and stop this scheme. And it's embarrassing, as I was out in the picket line, embarrassing to be comparing notes with other librarians from other cities, from Philadelphia to San Francisco. That's the least of our worries. But let's preserve the collection. Let's stop this idea that labor and shelving is something that is going to direct, you know, how the public access this incredible and very valuable collection. So thank you very much. Let's replace the library director.
Thank you. You may go ahead.
Hi, my name is Malicia Torres, and I don't speak English good, but I try to. I live in a Kool-Aid park for many years, and I am a member for the community. And I represent the community equally. And I would like to share our thoughts on moving to clinic, the clinic. First, we want to say that some of us have been around since the very beginning, when the clinic first opened. And I want to remind everyone of why this happened. This was to provide access to low-income communities of color and Hispanic and remedy racial disparities. The clinic was centered, is a center that a community and accessible to residents in the apartments and mobile homes nearly. Fast forward today, we want to report our disappointment in the main, in with this decision to move our community clinic. Back in November 2022, many of us from communities of color spoke with the Commissioner Hayapal and the Ortiz Center, and later met with Commissioner Vega Peterson virtually. But times we were told a decision had not been made. However, the large advertisement and floor plans in the lobby of the clinic told a different story. Imagining how deceptive this looks to communities of color and additional people were invited to the clinic, and people were giving gift cards to sell the clinic movie. Many of the people who went were even from the Kool-Aid community. We cannot sell our health for gift card. Later, we were told that a survey had been done since the very beginning. Many of us who live right here in Kool-Aid were invited to participate, so no, we did not have input. We know these are strong words, but we have to be transparent with you to say how we feel. Are you aware there is a new apartment complex, La Zaditas, that just opened across the street from the Ortiz Center? I leave that...
Written, yes.
...a hundred signs for you.
Thank you. Just give that to Marina, and she'll take care of it. Thank you.
Buenos dias, Countador Mauma. I'm Charles Bridgerton Johnson. And additionally, I think at this time of year, we should also say not just buenos dias, but salaam alaikum wa rakmatullah. It is Ramadan Mubarak. And how was last night different from all other nights? Hah, mishtana? So it's strange that nobody gets upset about saying happy holidays in April, but it's certainly a happy holidays week here. Maybe happiness based on, we had Bruce talk about some reporting from Nigel Jackus in the Week Sauce about the library. Yesterday, of course, Coins Amanda Arden, with just one little typo about the date, covered the decision to hire Dan Field. So those of us experiencing ultra-poverty and housing insecurity will be very interested to see how this former Kaiser executive can, you know, help put the puzzle pieces together to make the maximum reduction in the number of people who are forced to sleep outdoors every night. I don't know who any of the other four candidates were, and I'm always a little bit skeptical about a government that's overloaded with lawyers. So a duck law degree person, I'm sure, will turn out to be a good decision. Putting him in charge of an office that's reportedly got 95 people administering a budget of $225 million. Of course, all they do with that money is give it to other places. So I hope someday I'll have a better understanding of how there are 95 people that work in the Joint Office of Homeless Services, because that office is specifically designed not to directly deliver services, as I understand. Now, maybe there's some outreach people under in that 95, but I know you've got a huge puzzle. I can't even remember what the employment for the county overall is, but it was just a little interesting to see that to hand money out to TPI and whoever the number-two person that gets, organization that gets money from JOHS is, takes 95 people. Earlier on the consent agenda, we quietly passed C4. I didn't have time to look deep. It looked like that was about nine pages of hopeful, successful collaboration with the federal government. But no matter how many housing bonds we pass, no matter how many times the city of Seattle comes back and says, "Oh, in Seattle, we need to do another $900 million, nearly billion-dollar bond," until Ron Wyden and Merkley and Mr. Blumenauer, you know, it's a divided Congress right now, so who knows what can really happen. But until federal funding is improved and we talk about exactly what the financial structures were like in the pre-Reagan era, people are going to die unsheltered on our streets, and we will continue to have 2,000 annual homeless fires. So I appreciate the intent on this, and thank you all. Have a good holidays.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lightning?
Welcome. You can go ahead.
My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Super Karma Lab. One of the things I tried to do today is have item C4 pulled and put on the regular agenda. And for whatever reason, Marina did not want to notify you of me doing that. So this is, this meeting, to me, is absolutely invalid. Again, I wanted to have the federal agenda put in front of us for us to review for many reasons. It's one of the more important issues, I think, of the county. One of the issues that I saw that lacked on that, and I want to say this to the federal government, is that you had nothing to do with animal welfare, animal protection, domestic violence of people who have domestic violence, and they have a pet, and they want to be put into housing. You had absolutely nothing on this agenda. Your agenda is incomplete. It's incompetent, and it's an outright embarrassment. You know that Multnomah County Animal Shelter is having nothing but problems on how they run that facility. Nothing but problems. The animals are suffering. They're euthanizing certain animals over there, which I disagree. I disagree with why they're doing, why they are doing that. That is my issue. If they're healthy and they can have treatment, do not euthanize them. If they're healthy and they can have treatment, transfer them to another rescue facility. Do not end their lives. Again, on your agenda, for your federal agenda, you had nothing, nothing, nothing pertaining to the animals. That is a disgrace. And they did not even allow me to speak on this to these commissioners and have their position and their values put forward. Absolutely disgraceful. Again, I want to have a joint Office of Animal Services created for the animals, which will be Multnomah County, the City of Portland, and Metro. I want to have a new facility developed, similar to Santa Clara. You can pull that up. State-of-the-art facility, 37,000 square feet, approximate cost $40 million. We could easily do this. There will be additions added to that, I think, as far as forensic lab and other things that'll be added at the appropriate time. Again, I want to have a euthanasia panel created. I want to monitor any animals that you kill without the approval of the panel. I want you to put your values down on paper on why you are euthanizing the animal. I want to have a picture. I want to have all history background. I want to review every quarter, every quarter. Do not deny us the records pertaining to euthanasia of the animals.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have four more-
Humane death. I don't think so.
We have four more people signed up. Amina Faven, Lenny M. KW, Adi Escobedo, Elena Q. Lanes. Please come forward and have a seat up here. Pardon me? Amina Faven, Lenny M. KW, Adi Escobedo, Elena Q. Lanes.
I'm Amina.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to come here and sit down in front of you and speak. My name is Amina. I am a Somali member of people in Portland, Oregon. I'm here to advocate my community. Sadly, it has come to our attention that La Clinica will move to Northeast 42nd Killing Sword in late 2023, 2024. This move will greatly affect the well-being of our single mothers who are in the patient of the clinic. If you, if you see behind me, you will see nothing but women that advocating the right to have La Clinica. That is very accessible to them. These women do not drive, nor do they speak the language to the native direction. Even within 10-15 minute drive, it's another layer for them. We, the residents of allies of the Killing Sword community, strongly oppose this move. We want to remind you that organization leaders, La Clinica was created to serve individuals and families in the poorest of the neighborhood. The neighborhood that are largely Latinas, Somali, and Pythons, a neighborhood that has suffered many disparity throughout the years and cannot afford another setback. And if the argument that the new location isn't that far for the, remember, please remember, that while it might not appear that far to you, it's painful far for the immigrant Latinas and Somali moms and dads with the sick children who has to take the bus, and worse, to walk in the cold and the heat for the medical appointments. We are hugely disappointed that our input was not solicited before lunging ahead with the move. That is devastating to people in our community, our children and families. We ask immediate reaction of the decision and allow our voices to be heard and acknowledged and respect our voices and matter, because our voices do matter. And we hope it will matter to you. Another thing that came up across that is that we are moving this location because it doesn't have enough space to serve the community. We find out that the Lacienda across the street has offered a space where you can build in a bigger location, and that was never in consideration. So it's not about location. It's not about, there is not enough space. So I'm going to conclude to this. I know that my time is up, is that really, in the midst of all this, it's just another layer that is added to our community. Please take that into consideration, and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I believe that was testimony for R3, actually. I will come back to that. And I'll go to electronic virtual testimony. Let's see. Jessica Mathis. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You may begin.
My name is Jessica Mathis. I'm with the Welcome Home Coalition, and I'm coming to speak a little bit about the importance and urgency of wage advocacy. I want to speak a little bit about what is expected of housing case managers, as we're typically referred to in county contracts, and how those wages both impact our ability to stay in the work and deliver services in the way that people deserve, as well as how it is a huge impact on racial equity. I used to be a housing case manager. I actually was a coordinator for a housing program at Bradley Engle, where I provided housing to survivors of domestic and sexual violence. It was, you know, very rewarding to be able to see folks move into a home, but it was also incredibly traumatizing. Some of that, some of the trauma of doing that type of work is unavoidable, but some of it is compounded by the expectations and then the caseload, as well as your access to mental health services and time off due to wages. I supervised a staff of three, including folks that provided culturally specific services to African-American, Latino, and refugee survivors. And I was expected to supervise three people while carrying a caseload of 20-plus families. I also was expected to do a significant amount of budgeting for the program, as well as participate in our coordinated access program, which is important, but wasn't funded for the staff capacity to do that, as well as act as a sort of housing consultant to the entire agency. And this was an incredibly stressful load, and there were times when I would be sitting in apartments with families, talking through folks with their trauma, and feeling the pressure to help folks stay safe and to keep kiddos safe and to get families, parents and families access to resources. And there were times when I couldn't sleep at night because I would see the faces of little kids in my head, feeling like I didn't have the time or the resources to adequately serve families. And it was very hard, and it contributes to a lot of burnout. And it's incredibly important work. And the work that we're doing is not just administering rental dollars. It's providing emotional support services. It's taking people to appointments. Oh, and the expectation is that, you know, we want to serve people in a way that they want to be served, and that means often asking women of color and folks from poverty and trauma to do this work. And, oh, sorry.
Thank you. Next, we have Justin Bailey. Justin, you're unmuted. You may begin.
Glad to be able to speak to the commissioners. My, my name is Justin Bailey. As said, I've lived in the Mount Tabor neighborhood for 10 years now, and I'm concerned about the proposed safe park site that is being planned for opening near 82nd and Stark Street. Specifically, I'm concerned about outdoor campers near the park site, not those who can get there, but the people around the area. So I would like to ask Commissioner Rosenbaum and Chair Vega Peterson, is there a plan for managing the area around the site, and how will you ensure that we don't see an increase in outdoor camping near this new site?
Public comment is not a time for engaging in dialogue with the Board, but it is time for us to hear your concerns and comments. And we can have a follow-up with you after.
Would that be during the Board Comment Meeting, after the agenda items?
No, we can have someone follow up with you after we're done with the meeting. Marina has your contact information, and we can make sure that we reach out to you
Yes, if you could send me a plan or someone I can talk to further, I'd be glad to. I would like, I really would like to hear what is, what's proposed for this site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass your information along. Okay, next we have Albert Kaufman. One second. You are unmuted. You may begin. And Albert, you might have to unmute on your end. There we go.
And? Did that work?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you to the commissioners and to Chair Vega Peterson for hearing our testimony today. As the last person who spoke sort of noted, it does seem a little odd that there isn't more opportunity for a back and forth with you. But as you're all about a centimeter high on my screen, that's another interesting issue. But anyway, I'm here to talk to you about what just happened with Senate Bill 525 in the state. In the legislature, we had a bill that had a hearing on gas-powered leaf blowers and gas-powered lawn equipment. This sort of ties in with the city-county work group that just happened, that you were a- a part of. We are, the folks at Quiet Clean PDX and the thousands of people who are in support of a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers in our community are waiting to hear what's next from the county and from the city. Personally, I'd really like to see the county do anything it can to comment back to the community with some recommendations and with some commentary. If you can't give us what we, what we're asking for, which is a ban and just general reduction in the use of gas-powered equipment in our communities, at least there could be an education piece, which is part of what came out of the county-city work group. So that is something that I would like to see happen. I believe our group is reaching out to Chair Vega Peterson to try to schedule a meeting to see how we can move forward after the work of the city-county work group has happened. And I think this is part of why it's challenging in our community to effect change is once elections happen, the chairs on the deck of the ship change. And so, you know, we're, I hope that we are not having to start over from zero because I think a lot of really good work has been done. So with that, I will just close. I'm also running for Chair, I mean, I'm sorry, for Commissioner's seat. And I am very, I am humbled by how much work you all do and what it's like to be on the other end of all of this commentary and the challenges that face our community right now. So I bow in your general direction and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
The other folks I have signed up for virtual public testimony are not in the meeting, so I will move on to R1. R1, notice of, notice of intent to apply for up to $1,500 per year for five years for the Center for Disease Control and Prevention.
So moved.
Commissioner Myron moves, Commissioner Rosenbaum seconds, approval of R1. Welcome, Public Health.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Happy National Public Health Week. We'll be in front of you in a few minutes with some exciting updates and celebrations. My name is Jessica Guernsey. I use she/her/hers pronouns. I'm the Public Health Director and we are here to present our notice of intent to apply for one of our most important grants that we have in public health, the REACH Program, our racial and ethnic approaches to community health. As you all know, this is a cornerstone for our social determinants of health work, health equity, and addressing health disparities both locally and in conjunction with National CDC REACH Program. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Charlene and Mark Harris to go through the details.
Morning.
Morning, Chair and Commissioners. Mark Harris, Strategy Grant Development Manager for the Health Department. I'll just give you a quick overview of the logistics of the grant and then Charlene will jump in and give you details about what we're going to do. So as Jessica said, we're applying for up to 1.5 million over five years. So this will be a new funding cycle. We've been a REACH grantee since 2014. Our current funding, we're in the last year of that, so this will trigger a new funding period. This year, it's a little bit different. Currently, we're focusing on nutrition, physical activity, and community clinical linkages, as well as some supplemental vaccine work. This new funding cycle sort of put all that together and allowed us to apply for more funds than we currently have, which is great. So we'll continue with the nutrition, physical activity, and vaccine work, as well as add in a focus on breastfeeding strategies. We'll continue to work in partnership with the Achieve Coalition. And yeah, I think that's kind of the high-level overview. So Charlene, you want to take it away?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, Charlene McGee, she/her pronouns, interim director for Prevention and Health Promotion. So the current strategies that we have under nutrition, so we're, we've decided to move forward with nutrition, physical activity, and breastfeeding. And then with the current funding that we have from CDC for our vaccine work, that it's another component that we've decided to include. Under the nutrition bucket of work, we intend to continue to build upon our work in promoting food service and nutrition guidelines, working in partnership with different departments within Multnomah County, as well as the SUN schools and Oregon Food Bank, looking at improving and increasing access to healthy and culturally appropriate food. That work also built upon our healthy food procurement work, where we've worked with local farmers to increase and source food that's grown locally. With this round of funding, we're also doing some intentional strategic partnerships to build and weaving other programs within the Public Health Division. So looking to partner with the Future Generation Collaborative around some procurement work related to culturally appropriate meals and foods that are being served. Within the physical activity tract, we're looking at implementing local-level policies, both addressing the built environment, which looks at improving and connecting the community to activities that connect them to pedestrian, bicycle, transportation networks. Within the breastfeeding work, we look, we are looking to partner with local health systems, as well as the Health Department, some of the key strategies within that portfolio of work. We are looking and will strive to become designated as a breastfeeding-friendly Health Department, as well as looking to partner with some of our health systems to support them in getting the breastfeeding designation. And then lastly, relating to the vaccine work, part of that work, in addition to our flu and COVID-19 work, CDC requirement includes that we also look to increase access around adults, other adult vaccines. So doing that in partnership with local health systems, our community administration program, ICS, and other partners.
Thank you so much. I will go to the board for comments. Commissioner Myron.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I, I do have some questions about, I mean, this is always a great, you know, really great work, great investment, and it is a significant amount of funding. And I do have questions about some of the specifics and how we are, how we are investing the funds specifically in, to achieve specific outcomes. And so, but I don't feel the need to go into that in detail right here, right now, but would love to learn more. I do support, I do support this and support all of your work, so look forward to more conversations.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosenbaum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions, but I support all of this and it's great work and good luck. Hope we can continue it.
Thank you, Commissioner Stegman.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for coming. So this is, is it, am I doing the math right? One and a half million for each year for five years? So we're talking seven and a half million dollars. That's awesome. And what was, is it level or did it go up? Or is that?
It's a little bit more. I think our base grant's like around 750 and then our VAX is like 450. So what's that? So it's about 300,000 more a year than what we've been getting the last couple of years in this cycle, which is great.
Oh, great. That's fantastic. And I'm wondering, is there any relationship like with the crops, the old crops farm?
Absolutely.
Charlene, can you talk about that?
Yes, so the, under the nutrition strategy, that work remains and we're actually looking at expanding that potentially. So looking at how do we replicate the crops model into other parts of the county.
Awesome. And I know that we work with Mudbone Grown out in East County, and so that's a great organization. And I also really appreciate you calling out the pedestrian and traffic fatalities, which are completely unavoidable. And I work on the East Multnomah County Transportation Committee and that has been one of our top priorities to address. So I'm really happy that you all will be working on that as well. So thank you for coming today. Good news.
We also have that in the strategy as well to work with. I'd like some more to come.
We're in lockstep.
Well, thank you so much. I, I think that the work that REACH does is so important and I know that this is a backbone grant for the ability to get all that work done. So I'm happy to support this and just wish you the best of luck in getting it for doing five more years of excellent work. With that, we'll take a real call vote.
Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chair Vega Peterson?
Aye. The notice of intent is approved.
Thanks.
R2, public hearing and first reading of ordinance amending MCC Chapter 11 Preschool for All Program Income Tax to reflect certain administrative code changes.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Stegman moves. Commissioner Myron seconds, approval of R2. Welcome.
Morning, Chair and Commissioners. I wish I would have worn a suit because Will's wearing a suit. So, but for the record, Eric Ariano, Chief Financial Officer, and Will Glasson, Senior County Attorney. And we're here for the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 11, which is our preschool-for-all tax code. And we'll actually have a second reading hopefully next Thursday before we actually approve any proposed amendment changes to our tax code. So this is really triggered off of the Chair's waiver for penalties and interest for tax year 2021 for preschool-for-all personal income tax. At that time, we kind of had to take a step back and reassess from that waiver what things of that waiver would need to be incorporated into our tax code in terms of codification, but also kind of took a step back and said, let's take a look at our tax code and see if there's anything else that we need to modify reflecting kind of our experience with the first tax year. And this is reflective of that assessment and proposed changes that we're making today, Chair and Commissioners. So there's really, I wouldn't say it's extensive. There's two substantiative proposed changes, one minor change and then some housekeeping that we're doing. The first component is, as a Chair, as I said, the Chair provided a waiver for penalties and interest for tax year 2021. In addition to that, we also waived any underpayments for tax year 2022 for those individuals that are required to make quarterly payments. So in our current tax code, if you have a tax liability of $1,000 or more in a tax year, you're required to make quarterly payments. And if you have underpayment, you could be assessed interest. And so we waive that based on the timing. And so the first change we're proposing today is that we actually codify that into our code, so essentially saying that we're waiving any underpayment for those that are required to make quarterly payments for tax year 2022. That's the first proposed change. The second change that we're proposing today is currently in our tax code, we have a component that if you don't make, if you don't file on tax date, you don't make a payment on tax date, you're assessed a 5% penalty. If you don't submit within four months, then you're applied an additional 20% penalty for non-filing and not making a payment on time. And so what we felt that after kind of stepping back and reassessing, that that seemed excessive. And so we're proposing today that we eliminate that second layer of penalties of 20%. So if that's approved, it'll just be a 5% penalty for not filing or paying on, on tax date, tax due date. The third piece, which is less substantiative, is that currently in our code, we, we have a 10% interest rate, simple interest rate, that's applied to any late payments. Within our code, we're allowed to align with the state of Oregon in terms of what they assess in terms of interest. And so the state of Oregon actually has 6% currently. And so in our ordinance, we actually make it a note that for tax year 2022, that we're going to align with the state of Oregon at 6%. There's no reason to change the actual language in the code, but we did incorporate some language in the code that says that if there's a difference in any tax year between Multnomah County and the state of Oregon of 1% or more, one, more than 1% or less than 1%, that it automatically triggers us to align with the state of Oregon. I think that's a, that's a good practice moving forward. So again, we, we, that's a proposed change for the code, but we're also, again, for tax year 2002, intending to align with the state of Oregon in terms of interest assessed. And then the last components, we always, anytime we do a tax code change, we always try to do some housekeeping, some minor communication procedural changes. And we also do some, any grammar errors that are in there that we previously didn't correct, we go through and do that evaluation. And everything that we've done in terms of these proposed changes have been reviewed and approved by the county attorney. But also we, we've, these changes, we've coordinated with our administrative city, Portland, but also Metro in support of housing tax. They actually took their amendments to their council on the 23rd of last month and I believe this week is their second reading. So again, to maintain alignment with our codes. These proposed changes are as of tax year 2022 forward in terms of what we were bringing before you today. The other thing I would note, Chair, is just to take the opportunity to talk about this a little bit, is obviously the waiver that, that you approved was because we recognized a gap in communication that happened in tax year 2021. And so since then, we've taken some actions and continued to do some stuff. But the first thing is that for those individuals that did pay penalties and interest or were assessed a penalty and interest, a communication's already been sent out to those individuals, all individuals. And anybody that did pay, they're going to be receiving a refund between, from the date the waiver was implemented on February 14th, two to four months, all those individuals receive a full refund if they paid penalties and interest. The second piece that I would note is that this was something the county did, and I'll give kudos to the Communications Office. We did send out a mailer to Multnomah County residents notifying them a tax due date for 2022 and provided some, some highlights of the program, but also provided information that could give some kind of, some high-level information so people can assess whether they're subject to the tax, to help with awareness around this tax. The other thing we did was we're continuing to do push with tax softwares. And we did some more high-level outreach to executives with Intuit for, because we want to incorporate both our preschool-for-all tax and the supportive housing tax into their softwares, as most consumers use that. So we've done some more work there. And the other thing I would note is this, we're working with the city of Portland on this too, and Metro is we're also going to do some more outreach with employers, not just in Multnomah County, but in the tri-county around just, because one of the big components of putting awareness out there and making sure individuals have an opportunity to pay when they're subject is to actually have a withholding process. And starting in 2022 tax year, that automatic withholding from employers is, is a requirement. So I just wanted to give update on those communication pieces that we incorporate. Has nothing to do necessarily with the proposed amendments to the code, but I did want to share that information that is relevant. So, so open up for any questions or comments or anything, Will, that you want to add?
Okay, wonderful. So you're just here for the expert questions. And we'll go ahead and go to board questions and comments then. Commissioner Rosenbaum.
No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegman.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Eric and Will. So I just wanted some clarification. So for 2022, when is the tax due date? So like typically it's April 15th.
April 18th.
April 18th. And so I just wanted to get clarification. You talked about waiving a penalty fee, the 5% fee, if you didn't file on April 18th. And then also you talked about a 20% non-filing fee?
Yeah, so, so I referenced the waiver that the Chair approved on February 14th. That applies to tax year 2021 and that is a full waiver on penalties and interest. For tax year 2022, penalties and interest still apply for that tax year and the due date's on April 18th. But for, we do have a provision in the tax code that requires that individuals with a tax liability of $1,000 or more submit quarterly payments. And this applies to tax year 2022. Is that we felt with the timing of the waiver, that it also made sense to waive that potential underpayment interest. That's the first piece. And again, the second piece, I think you referenced, Commissioner Stegman, is the penalty piece, is that for tax year 2022, we have that provision that if you don't pay, if you pay beyond, if you don't pay for the first four months, you get an additional 20% off the initial 5%. And we're removing that, we're proposing removing that. We think it's excessive. So if it's approved, we'll just have a 5% penalty that will apply to any late payments from tax year 2022 to any future tax years.
Great. I appreciate you not only looking backwards, but looking forwards as well. And then you had mentioned, and I appreciate all the outreach that you've done about withholding. So you said that it's now a requirement and is that like a certain size of employer that is required or are all? that is required, or are all employers required?
All employers are required.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate sometimes government is challenging, and we're bureaucratic, and it's nice to see the flexibility that you all have offered us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Myron.
Thank you so much. I want to thank the Chair again for taking action in February to waive the late fees and interest for those subject to the tax, because it was the right thing to do. It was the right thing to do also a year ago, when I first elevated this issue with our previous county leadership. And it's unfortunate, it had to take raising it again and causing all this frustration and worry to people trying to do the right thing and paying their taxes to make something happen. But I am grateful it's happened, grateful for your work on this, and onward.
Wonderful. And did we have any public comment on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, Charles Johnson.
Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for the record. I'm Charles Simca Bridge Crane Johnson. And in addition to not having a suit, I would encourage Eric to go and review this testimony and compare it to his previous kick-ass testimonies. I think that this is a county where we always want to be pursuing excellence and raising the bar. And even with Commissioner Stegman's questions, we just had a financial presenter that never mentioned a single dollar amount. I know you have pre-briefings and stuff like that, and that some of the information is on the website. But I really think that for the level of constituent service you want to have, when we come in and we talk about waiving something, we should talk about the number of affected people and the amount of, you know, late fees. You know, hopefully, you know, on one hand, it's trivial. Hopefully, a lot of taxpayers who were slightly off the ball and got assessed late fees, hopefully that number is small. Is it large? We don't know, because that wasn't covered in the briefing. I generally agree that people who are trying to pay their tax instead of completely avoiding their tax should be, you know, encouraged, and that the energy should go into finding, you know, people who are engaged in complete tax evasion, especially at the higher brackets. You know, hopefully, we're getting the IRS on board with that nationally. But I do really think that, you know, given the scope of data that we usually get, that so far today, really in two things, we haven't heard about a number of constituents impacted or served. And while I fully support this move, I just think that knowing what the county's delinquency rates on various taxes, also, it's a great time for you to PR the Kick-Ass Preschool for All program and talk about how many children are going to have their lives improved by this program, while we have this one item that's, you know, probably only talking about tens of thousands of dollars, if maybe even that much. Thanks very much for your time, y'all.
Thank you. Well, go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chair Vega Peterson?
Aye. And I believe this one is, the first reading is approved, and the second reading is scheduled for April 13th, 2023.
R3, Resolution Approving a Lease of Premises Located Within Portland Community College's Campus at 4299 Northeast Killingsworth, Portland, Oregon, and Approving the Associated FAC-1 Project Plan for Tenant Improvements.
Second.
Commissioner Myron moves. Commissioner Stegman seconds approval of R3. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Do we have the slides with this one? Thank you. For the record, my name is Adrian Daniels. I'm the interim executive director of the Multnomah County Community Health Center, also known as Integrated Clinical Services.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm JD Deshaun. I'm with Facilities and Project Property Management, and I'm the project manager for this project.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us. Today, we're going to speak about the history of this project, the scope, the need, and discuss the next steps of the lease. So this morning, I'll start with a brief project history. This project, as mentioned earlier, it began over many years. It first started in 2021 with a conversation between Portland Community College and Commissioner Jaya Paul around the need for workforce development and support in the local Cooley neighborhood community. We were invited in with the understanding and discussion around the need for healthcare and comprehensive health services, especially for families and young women in that neighborhood. After deeper discussions with Portland Community College, we then engaged with our Community Health Center Board, which serves as a co-applicant with Multnomah County to oversee community health center services for residents in the area. This question often comes up, so I also want to speak about it this morning. The role of both boards is very important here. Our Community Health Center Board oversees our locations, shares demand for services, decides the locations, and types of work that we do. The Board of County Commissioners in Multnomah County simultaneously supports the work we do through infrastructure, management of staffing contracts, and other related support services. Both boards are important to this specific project today. Over the course of this past year, we've engaged in additional community outreach and feedback. I'm very grateful for the feedback we received, especially over the past two months, and that we've heard today, about the need to ongoing communication about transportation and barriers that might still exist to access and care in this community. Over the past several months, we've also engaged in robust conversations with Portland Community College.
Excuse me, Adrian. Do you need the slides up?
I have my slides in front of me, so if the Commissioners can see.
I'm having some technical issues, so Tia's pulling them up right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize about that.
So I wanted to make sure that we were.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We're seeing what we needed to see. Okay. Just give it one second, I think. There we go. Okay. And what slide should we be on?
Slide three, project history.
Slide three. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. That brings us to late 2022, where we have completed a communication and ongoing discussion with Portland Community College, not just about a memorandum of understanding, but about final lease terms negotiations, about what both parties bring to the arrangement, and how to both support the community and local neighborhood. If we move to the next slide, please. Overall, this speaks about the need. Multnomah County serves as the largest community health center, public health department in the state of Oregon. Approximately 1 in 10 Oregonians on the Oregon Health Plan will pass through a Multnomah County Community Health Center clinic. In the past year, we've served more than 60,000 patients, and we receive ongoing feedback from both our Community Health Center Board members, as well as existing patients in clinic, about the need for ongoing integration of services. We're very lucky that over the past several years, we've been intentional about bringing primary care, dental, and pharmacy together. La Clinica is one of our last remaining clinics that only has primary care on site. Clinics in this region have seen the benefit of expansion, most recently our North Portland Clinic, which added dental and improved our pharmacy services in the past three years. This also remains a top feedback for patients, that they still have to schedule additional appointments at multiple clinics if they seek more than just primary care. In addition, this is an opportunity for us to build on our workforce equity programs. In the past three years, we've also felt the crushing weight of how COVID has devastated the healthcare workforce, leading to more burnout, and also exacerbating national shortages which already existed, especially among dental assistance programs. This expansion opportunity also allows us a very unique partnership with Portland Community College to focus on two exceptionally high-needs staffing areas for the local community and for staff, in medical assistance and in expanded function dental assistance. Finally, this also helps us address staff feedback around the need for collaborative workspaces, as well as ongoing transit improvement options. Next slide, please. The scope of this work is vast. Our request is to design and build a new clinic in partnership with Portland Community College. In addition, after that build concludes in 2024 to 2025, relocate our existing clinic to the future workforce center. It also includes conducting extensive communication and ongoing engagement with the patient and community partners, as well as expand our current services to include the onsite pharmacy and dental care services that we hear a lot about today. Finally, it includes workforce development centered on medical assistants and pharmacists, as well as dental assistants, and then supporting the final relocation efforts. Next slide, please. This demonstrates the approximate proximity between the two locations. The vast majority of our patients travel from the current location within the immediate zip code. It is approximately one and a half miles between the proposed site and the existing site. Of note, 39% of patients live within the zip code. That does not change with this relocation. And the amount that live within walking distance of the current site and to the future location are close, but not identical. We have continuously asked our patients through focus groups and an additional second round surveys about transportation supports, and I'm grateful for their honest feedback about the barriers this may create. We are committed to continuing to engage with the community on this specific issue, about how we can reduce that barrier and address it directly, in addition to the expansion of services and workforce development. Next slide, please. This is the proposed site plan. What you'll see is that this project is about not just healthcare. It is wider around housing. It is around Portland Community College's commitment to workforce development, as well as support for other social care services. We're pleased that we will be joined by other community partners, such as NIA and Home Forward. If you go to the next slide, you'll see a draft as well. Oh, excuse me, not quite there yet. I know we've also received questions about how this clinic will serve the broader community, and I'm pleased that we're also celebrating Public Health Week today. And you'll hear later, specifically about pharmacy, around how that service is of particular importance in a region that does not have many options. In addition, we will bring dental on site. We're open to all patients, regardless of their ability to pay. And I want to emphasize again, the commitment to workforce equity this program introduces to our current suite of clinical services. There are three areas that will be specifically developed with the community. The first is expanding our partnership with De La Sal and their work-study program, which allows current high school students paid valuable internships, introducing them to a wide variety of jobs, and building their skills while still in high school. It also supports the county's internal workforce equity efforts with the support of WESP, engaging in additional retention efforts, promotional opportunities, and paid onsite training for our own staff. Finally, it expands in a third way, with Portland Community College students, including emphasizing their Discover Health Series, which allows us to provide onsite internships and preceptorships for their students who are interested in pursuing healthcare careers. You also heard this morning about the value of a relationship with public health. We have been critical in the past several years around community immunization collaborations. This is another opportunity that we see expansion efforts. Next slide, please. Want to touch again on patient and staff engagement. Throughout the past two years, clinic staff and teams have participated in the evaluation process. Our community advisory group could not join us today. However, La Clinica's community advisory group has been informed, as well as engaged on this effort, and has provided strong support. Our own Community Health Center Board has current and former patients of La Clinica, and is very, very supportive of our ongoing expansion and work to establish integrated services at one site to reduce burden on families who currently have to travel to multiple locations. In the past year, we've also expanded upon our client surveys about this effort, informational sessions, and focus groups. We recognize that there's work to do, and we intend to continue survey work and focus group work specifically around the issue of transportation and the barriers that we believe that that will present. In addition, we've been proud to partner with Home Forward, NIA, and Portland Community College with partnership tours, so they can see a fully-integrated working clinic, as well as learn about their own services and social supports. Next slide, please. I do want to make sure I can also mention some other federal considerations. This is a multi-step process. And so when building and expanding large clinics, we will also need to proceed with federal approval later after the clinic is built, as well as ongoing community investment and impact assessments, specifically around retail pharmacy expansion. Next slide, please. So, to summarize, we will commit to continued community engagement. We believe that this project will support not just our existing patients, but will engage with wider community groups, as well as allow us to expand workforce partnerships with many different organizations. We ask for your support today to continue this work in development and planning with a formal lease, which allows us to also move forward on formal execution and design construction plans. Next slide, please. What you see in front of you is a draft that staff helped design and provide input on. It recognizes the need for integrated services with specific emphasis on improved working conditions, such as having natural light in exam rooms, dedicated staff areas for relaxation, as well as rest and break areas, and most importantly, all three services onsite together, where we can really bring together healthcare in one spot to reduce patient access challenges. And I'll hand it over to JD to talk about specific technical facilities improvement work.
Thank you very much. I can have the next slide. So our schedule that we developed based on input from the architect Bora and from Anderson Construction would be, we would start design in May, and about seven months later, we will have all of the documents completed, which allow us to go to the city for final permitting. Since it's a shell build-out, we don't expect it to be a very long process, but permitting still takes a while within the city. Once we have all our permits, we will begin construction in March of 2024. We would have substantial completion in October. Substantial completion will allow us to move the furniture in, make sure all of the IT equipment and all of the medical equipment is there and installed and operational. And then we would open the new facility in January of 2025. What Adrian kind of pointed out is that it's going to be, close one, open the other. We would not be closing the other clinic until this one is ready to open. Next slide, please. So we had Anderson Construction give us their cost estimate. So these were based on their knowledge, using their health, healthcare specialist group to come up with the price. So we have their costs. We also included the soft costs, which are the cost for design, for medical equipment, for project management time, AVIT, the full other cost that we'd have. The other part to note is that PCC is contributing $1 million. So in the way it's working, basically when you look at the fiscal years, is they're paying the money upfront for the design and construction phase. The amounts in there for fiscal year '23 and '24 are mostly for internal county costs. And that's why the money really only gets spent from the county side in fiscal year '25. Next slide, please. And the only other part I think really want to talk about is the lease. So it's 9,704 square feet. The initial term is 10 years, and then we have four or five-year options, giving, you know, a total of 30. I think the expectation from everybody, PCC and the county, is this is a long-term relationship that will provide great value. And so we plan to be there for the entire time. The rate, it's $18 a square foot. We, when we negotiated the lease, we put a cap on the, on the rate increase, because inflation over the last couple of years has been high. And so we wanted to make sure that we took that into account and didn't have to go too high. So I've included the lease costs from year one, and then obviously it'll increase from there on. And that lease cost only kicks in once we get substantial completion. So October 24, when the county, in essence, takes possession of the space. So I think I have one more slide. Next slide, please. And the only thing I want to point out is that the renderings that we have in there were created by Bora, and they don't show our space, but they show what the rest of the facility will look like. So very open, a lot of wood, light colors, very inviting, and we're planning to use the same strategy for our space. So for the board resolution we are looking for today is to approve the FAC-1 project plan, so we can proceed with design and construction, and also execute the lease with PCC. Are there any questions?
Great. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and have public comment, and then we'll bring you back up for questions afterwards.
Madam Chair, we received four public testimonies in person and one written testimony, which was shared with board members and staff. When I call your name, please come forward to the table and speak. Amina Faven, Lenny M. Q., Addie Escobedo, and Elena Q. Amina Faven, Lenny M. Q., Addie Escobedo, and Elena Q. Lawness. And I apologize for my mispronunciation.
Okay, go up. And anyone else whose name was called can come down? Okay, go ahead.
Hello again. I just want to, this time it's not really enough to emphasize everything that we came here to do it. I just want to start saying that as you can, I don't know, as most of you might know that this is the month of Ramadan, and as you can see that we stay up late at night and do all the feasting and eating and everything else, but that has not stopped us to coming in here to talk about really the health disparity that people in our community do face, and that is our reality. And I know that it's really hard for your point of view, that it's really hard to see that the lives we live in and what we go through daily in people in our community, people that are immigrants to this country, people that have fled their country and left everything else that they know behind, and they are coming here to this wonderful, great country where they think that, you know, there's possibilities and things like that, and which really it is. But we do come across a lot of challenges, as I said. In the middle of COVID, La Clinica was closed, and we were told, people in our community, that they have to travel to Mid-County without considering, you know, how is that going to affect, you know? COVID was the biggest crisis that we deal with, that we have dealt since in my lifetime. Another thing that also that I can really say that it is that if we want to talk about, you know, La Clinica is not big enough space to offer everything that is, I mentioned it earlier, that, you know, La Cienda have offered a space to build it, and that would give people in our community also opportunity to have that continuing services that we desperately need. Also, please just consider people that are really affected this move, people that if you would take the minute and talk to all these people and ask, how is this going to move, this going to affect, you would hear truly how is that going to affect. I understand that it might be needing to do some updates and things like that, and as I said, you know, that's going to be well and fine, but take the time and really understand how is that going to affect people in our community. And it's truly heartbreaking to take that away from people who are so desperately in need. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I guess that's all the public testimony.
Was there anyone else here who had signed up to testify? Okay, all right. Thank you. Now, we'll go ahead to the board for questions. Commissioner Stegman.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Adrian and J.D. I did have a couple of questions. So, it was mentioned in some of the testimony about a potential space across the street from La Clinica. Can you address that?
Yes. So, there is a current space at La Cienda that they have developed for expanded housing with a Phase II also in development with additional community services. We had had several conversations about what would be an opportunity for our healthcare clinic in that space. At this time and based on resources and community and staff responses, we did determine that a partnership with PCC would be more responsive to our evaluation process.
Okay, great. I appreciate you at least looking at it and considering it. And then the other, I know in our briefings and we've heard lots of issues, and I want to thank you all for coming out and giving your testimony, and let me just digress for a moment, that I want to acknowledge that I understand what a challenge it will be for you and your families. And while a mile and a half may not seem like a lot when you're on foot, it's a considerable distance. And with your, you know, when you're with your children and all of the challenges that come, and we were just talking about pedestrian safety, so I do want you to acknowledge that I understand as much as I can the challenges and the disruption if this moves forward that it will cause for you all. So, can you talk a little bit about what we're going to do around transportation to help mitigate these consequences?
Yes. As is our current practice, we will continue to provide free transportation through assisted, excuse me, I'm forgetting the formal name, but taxi vouchers for individual families who need that. But that is also our commitment through feedback at focus groups that we have received from both Latinx and Somali patients around the need for something greater. And so, our next round of patient surveys and focus groups is exactly focused on that question and very committed to community feedback on that area around what does that solution look like? Is it focusing on different type of transportation options such as a shuttle system? Is it considering some form of virtual telehealth care between both agencies? Is it something we haven't even thought of yet?
Great. Thank you so much, Adrian. I appreciate that. And then on the one slide where it did show, like, the map, I think it's like two or three, and it talked about that 39%, I'm just wondering what the stats are at the old location. So, it's saying that 39% of folks lived within that ZIP code, and then a certain percentage within walking distance. And I'm just wondering, like, how does it, what are those numbers, percentages on the old location versus the new location?
Sure. So, based on the current location, 29% live with walking distance of our current site. We believe that 25% are closer to the future location.
Okay, that's helpful. And how many, how many patients are seen? Do you have an idea, like, what's the volume at this clinic?
La Clinica is one of our smallest primary care sites, and so they see close to 2,000 individual, unique patients at that location. We believe we have the capacity to see more, but in its current form, we're unable to physically see more patients. It's also a site where patients, if they receive a diagnosis or need additional services such as dental cleaning or need to pick up medication, they may also be seen at another location currently or go to a private practice provider.
And so, is your hope, do you think that number will expand once, and do you know what those numbers would be, might be?
Yes. We, in the early stages of our evaluation, looked at what's known as the Uniform Data System, which is a federal report comparing a ZIP code by ZIP code basis of uninsured and underinsured patients. What those numbers showed us is that there's approximately 12,000 patients in that immediate ZIP code that say they have no usual source of primary care and would like to go to an FQHC. We do have plans to see closer to 5,000 patients in the new expanded facility, which we believe will help reduce the gap in patients who are seeking care and those who do not have care.
Wow, that's, yeah, go ahead, J.D.
Sorry, I just want to add one thing, that current space is about 4,000 square feet, new space is about 10,000 square feet. So, that gives you an idea of, aside from the dental and the pharmacy, that there is, you know, going to be a significant increase in ability to serve the population.
Well, that's really, that's pretty incredible to go from potentially 2,000 to 5,000 folks. And, you know, again, I know that it is, you know, until it affects you individually, it's easy to say, we have to do what is for the greatest good, but I also want to acknowledge that it will impact individuals and that we are going to try to do everything that we can to mitigate those transportation challenges. But, I mean, the pros of this lease of, you know, the workforce and how do we get more people of color into these fields that need, need to be filled, you know, the expansion, the dental work, the pharmacy, in some ways it will really, it will expand services and serve so many more people and actually make their lives easier, I think, and I believe. So, I just want to appreciate, it's hard sometimes to make these tough decisions, but ultimately, I think this decision will end up serving more people, and it will provide for the greater good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Rosenbaum.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the public testimony and to everyone for showing up to, I know how important this is to the community. Commissioner Stegman actually asked my questions already, so I'll just comment that I think, you know, I know efforts have been made to involve the community, but obviously there are still going to be challenges, and it's really important going forward that community involvement is just paramount to success of any project, and particularly when the impact is so significant as it will be. So, as you see by just the presence of people, people are really concerned, and we want to make sure that we do everything we can to address that, so. But it does sound like the improvements are going to be significant, and will definitely better serve everybody's needs just with some challenges, so hopefully we can meet those. Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank you for all of the work that went into this, and I know that this was something that was, you know, had a lot of communication and conversation and, you know, considerations at the community health center board where they were really making the decision about the future of the clinic and the potential and the possibilities with the new clinic and decided to move forward with that. You know, I think for me, because, you know, our role is more on the, you know, as you clearly said earlier, more around the lease and the building and those pieces, I want to make sure that we are using the time between where we are in this process and then, you know, really almost the almost two years, you know, you know, the 20-some months that we have between this and when the, when the new clinic would be opening to have those, not just the conversations, because I know you already have those planned, but really, like, what resources and what services do we need to be putting in place to make this transition hard? Because, and I appreciate Commissioner Stegman, your questions, because those were exactly the ones that I wanted to make sure got addressed, both the consideration of, you know, this possibility versus some of the other alternatives that had been mentioned, as well as, you know, the piece around the challenges and the impact to people's lives. And so, I do appreciate everyone being here today, everybody's ongoing concerns about what this change means in terms of the impact for your ability to access care, your ability to have something within the community that is an important resource, and, you know, just the challenges. And I know that these will be things that are considered as we look forward and exactly what this is going to look like, both in terms of the care, which sounds fantastic, by the way, I mean, just the ability to be combining the pharmacy, the dentistry, the workforce components with the existing, you know, healthcare that's being provided is a really wonderful opportunity, and to do that in partnership with PCC, I think is a very strong connection. And also, you know, we need to be making sure that, that the clients, you know, and the needs of the clients and the community are really integrated into the plans. And I, and so, just want to appreciate that and appreciate what I've heard and then the ongoing commitment to that as well. All right, with that, we will go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chair Vega Peterson?
Aye. The resolution is approved.
Thank you.
R4 proclaiming April 3rd to 9th, 2023 as National Public Health Week in Multnomah County, Oregon.
So moved. Commissioner Stegman moves, Commissioner Rosenbaum seconds. When there's this few people, everybody, we need everybody on board. Approval of R4. And welcome, it's more public health, yay! And as folks get settled, I neglected to mention at the beginning of the board meeting that Commissioner DiPaolo is excused for this meeting and that Commissioner Ryan was excused to leave at 10:30, and she also appreciated everybody being here and was sorry to have to leave early. All right, welcome, Valdez. I believe you are kicking things off, although, do I? I might have actually some comments myself, so. So, I, yes, I do, I do. So, wonderful, so this is great because we've heard it mentioned, it's been teased in earlier items about this being Public Health Week. We know that at Multnomah County, public health is actually a priority 52 weeks of the year, but this is a really important week because this week, we are focusing on centering and celebrating cultures and health with daily events across Multnomah County. And we know it's a priority every week of the year because of our social safety net relies on a robust public health response when members of our community are doing well and when they're in crisis, when we're in the middle of a global pandemic and we're going on with our normal lives. This week of reflection and celebration helps us to slow down and remember what public health means to us. It gives us the chance to recommit to being the best stewards of our public health resources and to also thank the public health professionals whose courage and perseverance lifts us up and keeps us healthy every day. So, I'm so proud of our public health response, prioritized connections with the community from our Healthy Birth Initiatives and Future Generations Collaborative to our partnerships with Reach as the convener of neighborhood, community, and faith-based organizations. And I really am grateful that we have this chance to celebrate today, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Chair. For the record, my name is Valdez Bravo. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the interim director of the Health Department. If you could go to the next slide. It would take thousands of board meetings for us to comprehensively detail work that falls within the scope of public health in Multnomah County. So, today, you're just getting a snapshot of how public health takes shape in our community. And while the COVID-19 pandemic acquainted many of us with the ins and outs of public health, I'm excited today to showcase public health work that expands beyond the pandemic, work the Health Department and our community have been at for decades before and during the pandemic. Public health is everywhere, and it really is for everyone. Just take a look at this slide, you'll see pictures of vaccination in action, cooling shelters, environmental health advocacy, and community health work. And that's just barely scratching the surface of what public health includes and how our Health Department works to advance public health. Public health is vast. It connects community wisdom and experience with data, science, and medicine, and for that reason, public health takes all of us. In the Health Department, that means collaboration across all of our divisions to generate impactful and sustainable solutions. As a community, that means caring for one another, listening to one another, engaging in civic actions, and being stewards of our environment. As a government, it means evaluating and changing systems rooted in oppression and building infrastructure and opportunity that truly serves everyone in our community. Through public health, we strive to make Multnomah County a place where everyone can live long, robust, stable lives. This work is iterative and constant. Today, you'll hear about our past success, present work, and our investments in the future. So, without further fanfare, I'm pleased to turn it over to Mike Obiero, who is going to speak to the dedication and commitment it requires to meet the needs of truly everyone in our community.
Welcome, Valdez. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Chair Vega Peterson. Next slide, please. My name is Mike Obiero. I use he/him pronouns. I'm the Corrections Health Director. We have served, we will be of service. It's an honor to represent the Health Department and specifically Corrections Health. I wanted to highlight the amazing nature of our efforts of our staff through, to go through public healthcare for the adults and youth in custody. I know my opinion has Corrections Health-tinted glasses, but I would be remiss to not point out how in all I continue to be of our staff throughout a never-ending pandemic and, most recently, significant fentanyl issues. A picture, as they say, is worth a thousand words, and as you can see up there already. This, though, was one of, this is Nurse Yana, and she is skiing to work at JDH at the Donald D. Long Building to get to work. This is one picture, you know, among a dozen other people who, during the last winter event, risked life and limb, quite literally, and did anything they could to get to work. We had staff that skied to work, walked to work, paid for hotels to ensure that they could get to work, picked up additional double shifts intentionally to ensure that coverage never faltered. We had staff that slept in the jails. I'll repeat that, we had staff that slept inside of the jails. It wasn't simply a case of showing up or being at work, it was a recognition that there were vulnerable adults and youth that needed us there. Staff came or stayed, and importantly, spirits were always up. People gave so much in service for the vulnerable with no exception or rewards, no expectation of rewards or accolades. Leadership drove around to get, to make sure people were fed, snacks were present, and while many stayed home, they showed up, and we served. This is the way.
Next slide, please. Good morning, everyone. I'm Jackson Mitchell. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a program manager with our HIV/SCI and harm reduction program in public health. I'm a program manager with our HIV/STI and harm reduction program in public health. Over the past several years, we have worked to expand our cross-departmental collaboration. COVID is often the first example of a unified response that people think of. But prior to COVID, programs were already collaborating across systems, working on responses to increases in HIV and syphilis, working to prevent overdose among adults exiting correction settings through naloxone distribution upon release, working through culturally responsive outreach and education about vaccine-preventable communicable diseases like measles. We applied many of the lessons learned during COVID to stand up a robust response to MPox that drew upon the trusted community relationships held within the HIV/STI program. It drew upon the expertise of the communicable disease case investigations team. It drew upon the community wisdom gleaned through the community partnerships and capacity building program. Community epidemiology ensured our strategies were data-driven and the vaccine teams quickly stood up clinics. These past years, our harm reduction program has worked with emergency shelters to ensure that Narcan is available onsite during activations of the system due to winter weather, due to wildfire smoke, and due to extreme heat. Another monumental success we would like to highlight is the board taking action to ban the sale of flavored tobacco and nicotine products, including menthol in Multnomah County. We had three primary health goals when banning the sale of flavored tobacco and nicotine products. These included, one, minimizing initiation use of tobacco and nicotine among youth and young adults; two, addressing the longstanding racial disparities related to menthol; and three, decreasing preventable deaths and health harms associated with tobacco and nicotine use. The adopted ordinance represents a significant advancement for public health. And the passing of the ordinance reflects the dedication, persistence, and hard work of community, health leaders, and elected officials for well over a decade. It is a policy that will undoubtedly save lives. At this very moment, we're deep in a cross-departmental collaboration to inform priorities and strategies for addressing substance use in our community. And we are deeply committed to taking a one-department approach to this work.
Next slide. Good morning, Chair Vega Peterson and the rest of the Commissioners. My name is Anthony Jordan, and I'm the Addiction Services Manager with Behavioral Health within the Health Department. Public health systems and solutions have to be built with the people they serve at the center. Time and time again, in our work, we encounter individuals and families seeking help with addiction, but struggling to make, struggling to navigate the system. That's why our work is divided between infrastructure development and direct services. Addressing substance use disorder is complex work and requires a continuum of care built on systems capable of supporting individuals with complex needs and services. Within the Behavioral Health Division, we provide direct services to help individuals with behavioral health needs by giving them the treatment and long-term care of addictions and mental health services. In the last year, we have helped more than 2,500 people access addiction and recovery services, whether for substance use disorder or gambling services. We have trained 450 people in providing mental health first aid services to enable more people to meet the needs of our community. Our work doesn't stop with just addressing addiction directly. Within our department, addiction services are connected to the work being done by harm reduction teams and public health and the care offered by Corrections Health. All of our work is interconnected and relies on collaboration. Through the Behavioral Health Resource Network, often called BURNS, we have begun to work with many of the BURNS providers in centralizing tasks, including referrals and coordination of care. This collaboration prevents further fragmentation of our system and supports the development of one integrated system. It also includes creating pathways between the organization so that our community does not experience gaps in care by making connections between the various service components, addiction, housing, employment, and mental health services. This is the work of public health, not just addressing what is immediately in front of us, but also asking, how can we serve this person's addiction needs using a holistic approach? We do this by evaluating the systems and circumstances that was created, facilitated, or in some cases worsen a problem and work to address those while providing direct services. These questions are expansive, but solving them is possible. Through embracing collaboration, innovation, and persistence, we improve our community every day.
Next slide, please. Good morning, thank you Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michelle Coder. I'm the Pharmacy Director for Integrated Clinical Services, also known as Multnomah County's Community Health Center. As a community health center, our work represents the collective movement for public health and social justice. Born out of the war on poverty and civil rights movements of the 60s, health centers embraced the concept that health is more than just a medical appointment. They extended its social wellness and racial equity. I am pleased to be here today to speak about the public health reach of Multnomah County's Community Health Center through the unique lens of the pharmacy program. In addition to providing traditional pharmacy services, including dispensing COVID-19 therapeutics and treatment for HMPXV, we enjoy strong partnerships with other Health Department programs through several forums, one of which is helping our communicable disease partners prevent the spread of TB by providing them with daily dose packets for direct observed therapy. Another example is procuring over 23,000 naloxone doses this fiscal year for distribution to community partners in partnership with the Harm Reduction Program. We are also increasing investments to better meet the needs of our community and help reduce healthcare disparities, including providing drug takeback receptacles in seven locations throughout the county, adding technology to support medication adherence for those who suffer or have challenges with health literacy or medication literacy, and adding technology that enables us to create dual-language prescription labels with 99 different languages. Thank you.
So without further ado, I'd like to read the proclamation for the Chair and our Commissioners. Proclaiming April 3rd to 9th, 2023 as National Public Health Week in Multnomah County, Oregon. The Multnomah County Board of Commissioners finds, "Multnomah County Health Department aspires to foster healthy people and healthy communities through a wide range of evidence-based public health approaches. The Health Department works to prevent, prepare for, mitigate, and recover from the impact of the full range of health concerns in our community. We strive to be a local source for timely and useful health information that our communities can trust. Foundational to all public health work is the understanding that systemic racism has always been and continues to be a primary influence on the structure and well-being of our communities. The detrimental impact of racism on the social determinants of health, healthcare, education, social and community contexts, economic stability, housing, and environment results in health inequities for BIPOC communities and negatively affects health outcomes for all people in Multnomah County." "Multnomah County Health Department actively invests in programs and policy solutions designed to address racial inequities, including, but not limited to, a passing on the sale of flavored tobacco, creating funding opportunities for culturally specific organizations, and increasing data collection and analysis aimed at understanding health disparities. Public health includes our environment, the quality of the air we breathe and the water we drink, and the accessibility and safety of the built environment. Focus on environmental health is a vital investment in both the present and the future. It is vast, stretching from the routine monitoring of water sources to emergency warming and cooling shelters to policies that make our roads safer. Creating impactful and sustainable resources and programs to support behavioral health is complex but essential public health work. In Multnomah County, this work strives to reduce trauma from violence and help those with substance use and other behavioral health challenges find their path toward recovery and wellness through harm reduction, peer support, and treatment. It also includes addressing the full context of people's lives, connecting them to resources for secure access to food, healthcare, and housing. Public health focuses on addressing the leading causes of death at their source, eliminating the systems, circumstances, and beliefs that manifest health issues. Addressing root causes means we must weigh high-quality data collection and analysis equally with community voice and wisdom. It takes shape in everything from public information campaigns to spread awareness about disease prevention to youth-led advisory groups aimed at building foundational self-awareness and interpersonal skills and policies to establish healthier environments. Investment in disease prevention works. National data demonstrates each 10% increase in local public health spending contributes to a 6.9% decrease in infant deaths, a 3.2% decrease in deaths related to cardiovascular disease, a 1.4% decrease in deaths due to diabetes, and a 1.1% decrease in cancer-related deaths. Multnomah County carries public health values through delivery of clinical care in 18 health center locations, behavioral health treatment and prevention services in all schools within the county's six districts, and three county jail facilities. The Community Health Center prioritizes accessibility and affordability because every person needs access to high-quality, affordable care irrespective of their ethnicity, race, gender, sexual identity, or their financial status. Whole-person health means that clinical services extend beyond primary care to include pharmacy services, behavioral health, oral health, and STI and HIV care. It also means that health centers offer enabling services such as assistance with insurance enrollment and language translation and interpretation in over 100 languages. Public health is not limited to the work of the Health Department, but also lives in the leadership, dedication, and innovation of many partners across the region, including the Board of County Commissioners, our county department and office counterparts, other jurisdictions, community-based organizations, health systems, and many others. And while countless people make public health progress possible in Multnomah County, it is essential to celebrate the more than 1,500 employees in the Health Department dedicated to public health. Health Department staff do not just serve our community, they are part of the community. Every day, they bring passion, expertise, innovation, and care to their work and support of a healthier community for themselves, their loved ones, their colleagues, and everyone across Multnomah County. So we ask that the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners proclaim that April 3rd to 9th, 2023 be Public Health Week in Multnomah County Health, or Multnomah County, Oregon. This recognizes the efforts of the Multnomah County Health Department, the county, the state, and local municipalities, tribes, local communities, and individuals in preventing disease and injury and promoting health, safety, and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Possibly we should rename it Multnomah County Health for this. That might be an idea for next year. We'll go to the board for comments, Commissioner Rosenbaum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very pleased that this is coming forward today. And as has been said earlier, it should not just be a week, but every day. So to me, along with the housing work, this, the health work that we do is the most important for our community. And I can't imagine how, what more we could, I mean, there's always more we can do, but it's great that we're acknowledging that. And the direct services that we provide along with the advocacy that you talked about today, you know, things like the flavored tobacco, but so many other issues too, that in my time as a legislator, I always saw the county and the leadership on those issues taking the lead often. And a lot of them, you know, took a long time to come to pass and will still be doing that work for a long time to come. And then, you know, the holistic approach, looking at this as not just an isolated area, but that it fits with everything else, that people need and that we do. And then the anti-racism work, the equity, all of that is just crucial. But I think even, even more than any of those is really, as you've all highlighted today, the dedication of so many people, the 1,500 people that are doing this work every day. It's just, you know, it was always evident to me, but being here, I see it even more. And then with the pandemic, obviously, you know, throughout that, it just was crucial, but it is in any circumstance. So, you know, I think this is great. I'm really pleased that we're highlighting the work. But I think every day that we're here, we know people are out there just absolutely, they'll get to work no matter what happens and make sure that the people's needs are being met. So thank you all for being here for your leadership and even more to all the people that are doing this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosenbaum.
Commissioner Stegman?
Thank you, Chair. Well, it's so great to have you all here. Thank you, Valdez, and Anthony, and Jackson, and Mike, and Michelle. It's just, you know, I mean, there's so many challenges in the world that it's just nice to take a moment to stop and appreciate the important role that public health plays. And it really touches every single person's life, as has been said, from the pandemic to HIV to, you know, all of the challenges. And Mike, I remember seeing you on our annual jail tours and seeing, you know, the work that your team does is, and I love the picture of the nurse. Like, I mean, you guys are gonna have to change your motto to like the post, you know, health leader snow, literally, hell, no. But I mean, that, it's just, I think that is so symbolic of the commitment that people in the health field and public health have is that, I mean, you're clearly not in this to become wealthy. You're here because you care deeply about people and especially, you know, our most marginalized communities. And that's why you do that work. And so it's so evident every time I interact with your 1,500 team members. You know, and I think it's just, it's so vast, like, I mean, all the things that, you know, from Narcan to talking about syphilis and HIV and MPox. And then, you know, the mental health, which we know is huge, the first aid, the mental health first aid, and the harm reduction. And I think, Anthony, you talked about, I really love that you're working with corrections. And that's, you know, as you know, sometimes we are in silos. And that's not working out very well for us. And so to see you making considerable progress and trying to overcome those silos is really, really important. And then just our health clinics, like, sometimes like people don't realize, like, our health clinic and the services that we deliver is a huge percentage of our budget and what the county does. At the heart of what the county does is we deliver medical services to people. And then, and I loved in your proclamation, those staggering statistics about the decrease in deaths, like, I don't know, I think we need to spend some more money on public health. I mean, really, 10% and to see, you know, for every 10% to see those decline in death rates, that, that's incredible. So I hope that as we go through the budget and different state, federal funders will read that proclamation and take heed to those numbers. And then just finally, just, you know, thank you to all of our health employees. And I want to call, I saw the picture of Dr. Vines. And miss you, Dr. Vines, if you're out there. And, you know, and I think, and I know Jessica was, yeah, is she here? And, you know, and I think about the grueling effort that many of you all played in banning flavored tobacco and literally the decade, probably longer. But we got it across the finish line. And it, you know, it was just one of those things that I think some of you may have felt like, is this ever really gonna happen? And I know that many of you have, you know, just poured your heart and soul into that kind of work. And again, I think that that is very symbolic of the commitment that you all have, that you bring every day to your work. And I appreciate it. And I want to thank each and every one of you for showing up every day to serve as animals. The folks that need you most, you are helping. So thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Stegman.
Yeah, I want to just add my thanks and accolades to all of the work that is done with our Health Department, with our Public Health Department. Hello, Jessica. And it was great to hear from you and Charlene and Mike earlier today on the important work that continues to happen, that we continue to push forward. I think this is the first time in memory for me that we have had such a universal presentation around the role of our entire Health Department in, in public health and the importance of the work that is happening across all of our different, the different facets of the way that we deliver health and engage with community health at Multnomah County. And so I really appreciate that. I think this was perfect for this year, for the focus of this year. And I really love what it speaks to in terms of the way that we're approaching, you know, the health and how it, what it looks like and how it works here at Multnomah County. And that, like, no matter what division you're in, no matter where, we're really all about delivering that unified kind of focus and whole health to the community, as has been mentioned several times here. So really appreciate that. And, you know, and I do think that it's important that, you know, we continue to push forward for the resources that are necessary to truly deliver public health, that we are not just, you know, playing, we, you know, there was so much focus on, 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 on public health during the pandemic and with COVID. But we know that the steps that are happening at the
the steps that are happening at the state level with public health modernization, the need at the federal level to continue to maintain ongoing investment so that we are in a better shape, you know, whenever the next pandemic or emergency is going to happen is so critical. And so we just, you know, we'll continue to advocate at that, at that level, and just to continue to lift up the importance of public health and the critical role it plays for all of our community members. And you guys did a great job of talking about that and sharing that today. So thank you, everyone, for that. And I know that even though Commissioners Stegman and I weren't able to be here for this, that they are wholeheartedly in support of the work that happens here and really appreciates all the work that you, all of our teams and employees do here in the Health Department. So thank you all for that. And with that, we will have the Clerk take a roll call vote. Marina?
Commissioner Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chair Vega Peterson?
Aye. The proclamation is adopted.
Thank you so much for your support.
Great. So we've concluded our regular agenda. Now we have time for Board comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Rosenbaum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really don't have much today, but I did want to mention that we will be having an election coming up, May 16th, a special district election. And it's important for people to, even though we make it very easy to vote here in Oregon, you do need to be registered, and you can't wait until the election to do that. So the deadline is Tuesday, April 25th. So be sure to make sure you are registered, or if you need to update your registration, and you can do that on the Multnomah County Elections Division website. Just a reminder.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's always a good reminder, and that it does sneak up on you. So Commissioner Stegman?
Thank you, Chair. In light of Public Health Week, Valdez sent out an email, I think, to all of us about different events that we could attend, and there is an East County Health Walk, an art event, this Saturday. No, I lied. It's Friday, April 7th, from 12 to 1:30. We are gonna meet at Vance Park, and then we are going to walk over to the Rockwood Market Hall, where there will be lunch served, and there'll be muralists there. And so please join us on this Friday from 12 to 1:30 at Vance Park, and then to the Rockwood Market Hall. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Stegman. I actually do not have anything for this week. I guess the one thing I would mention is that there is Transition Projects is having their annual event on this Saturday, and so I look forward to joining them. They are a huge partner of ours in the work that we do for our community, especially our most vulnerable populations. So I'm looking forward to helping them celebrate and acknowledge all the great work that they do then. So with that, we are adjourned. We will be back here on April 11th for our Board briefing. Look forward to seeing everyone then. Good night.